Good afternoon, good evening, I guess it is to all of you. And welcome to our first meeting in March 2020. I'll just give you a quick little public service announcement. Don't forget that this coming weekend, we're gonna spring forward and get back on daylight saving time, so be sure to set your clocks forward. When we meet the next meeting, we'll already be on that new time, so it'll still be light outside probably. At any rate, welcome you all to the meeting this evening. We have several things to do, and so we'll be following the agenda. There should have been copies out in the foyer if you need to have one to refer to. So, tonight, we're privileged to have some special young people with us here this evening. Ordinarily, Mr. Councilmember Dallinger would be leading us in our pledge of allegiance, but we have a Boy Scout troop here this evening, Troop 392. And if you young men would feel free to come forward at this time, I'm gonna mention first names, so that I won't butcher any last names. We have Jonathan, Joseph, Ethan, Joshua, and Victor. Did I get all those names correctly? A few minutes, just wanted to line up right there, and, okay. Thank you, gentlemen, okay. Would you like to lead us in the pledge? And we'll ask you to turn around, and we'll all stand if you'll stand and join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, I now call on Councilmember Dallinger, who will have our invocation.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for this day, to serve this beautiful community and the beautiful people within it. Thank you for our help. Let us pray for those and make those well who are ill, and protect those who are caring for them. Help us to be good stewards of all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. In this name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Dallinger. Madam Clerk, do we have any persons that signed on a sheet that desired to speak? Okay, are there any persons here this evening who desire to speak to the council under the section of petitions and comments? If there are any, I'll read an introductory remark. If not, I'll forego that.
Howdy, howdy.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I'll ask council, if you're prepared to make a motion that we approve the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is properly motion and second. Any discussion or changes, additions? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There's no opposition, and so it is approved. Thank you very much. Okay, the first item now is under the heading of presentations, and we will hear from Mr. Joseph Stallings, our Economic Development Director, who will share some interesting information with us this evening. Thank you, Mr. Stallings, for being here.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Councils. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. I'm here to present to you all the new website for Garner Economic Development. This is a part of the new work plan that was presented to you all with the GDC and their transition to a more overall economic development entity within the town. And what I want to do this evening is show you what they have put together. This will be essentially the face of our economic development efforts, or our online face for our economic development efforts moving forward. You can see the logo that has been placed in the top right-hand corner that will be for the organization. But this website is really more about marketing the town and providing good, solid information to potential site selectors and real estate professionals around the nation and outside of our own country. We have not gone live yet. We are planning to after this meeting to push this out. The URL will be choosegarnernc.com, and we wanted to show you all this before we did so. A few of the unique features, or things I wanted to hit on, is it's not just gonna be for our large recruiting efforts, but also for things like our small business initiatives. Some of here that you can see, excuse me, I must have timed out. Some of our small business initiatives such as Gearworks, our Garner Entrepreneurs of Tomorrow, our youth entrepreneurship program that's being run through the GDC, as well as resources here, and our business retention and expansion program is highlighted as well. So those companies that are existing in our community today can go to this website, put in their information here, and we'll send an email directly to my office to request a visit from the town to them. And so we are really excited to get this going. Like I said, this is just one initiative out of many as a part of our marketing program within the Garner Economic Development Corporation. As well as, there's some things here about featured properties, opportunity zones, and et cetera. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but we wanted to make you all aware of this. Like I said, we covered this in our work plan, I assume it's been about a year ago, whenever we presented that to the town council, whenever we were transitioning to the GDC after the sale of the Conagra property to Amazon.
Just before I ask, well, I preempt Phil just for a minute, but I'll let you go, Phil. On behalf of the Garner Economic Development Corporation, of which I am still a part for now, we're pretty excited about this new opportunity to promote our town and things related to it, and we spent some money on it that we think is well-spent. So, thank you, Joe, for presenting it, but Phil, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is great. It really is. And I wanna see the available properties up there. Is this gonna be where they can go online and look at just property itself, or potential business buildings, or a combination thereof?
Currently, what is there are highlighted or featured properties. They tend to be more industrial or large-scale commercial focused. It will not be like an MLS listing like you would have with LoopNet or some other service. It'll be those opportunities in our community that we believe have the greatest potential for being a location for a larger project.
Does that extend out into ETJ or just in corporate city limits?
Well, we would look at it, if it was in the ETJ, and we would be servicing it through utilities which then would come into our community, we would be interested in taking a look at it, certainly.
Okay. Looks great.
Thank you.
Okay, other councilmember, comments or and/or questions for Mr. Stallings?
Good job.
A job, obviously, a job well done, and the transition from the GDC, which was responsible for working hard, bringing in Amazon, to now an entity which is looking at the whole town. I think this is a great move.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stallings, very much. And if any councilmembers haven't been to the downtown area Gearworks down there, I had not been in that for a while, that's an interesting place to see how that space is being used now. So encourage you to stop by if you have an opportunity. Okay, we'll now move to the consent portion of our agenda, and councilmembers will notice several items on there, including at least a couple of items I know we discussed at our recent work session that we anticipated would be on there. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, any questions, comments, observations, changes? Hearing none? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, no, and there is none, and so it all passes. Okay, we're moving right along to the public hearings section of our agenda. First item, presenter is Ms. Stacy Harper. Stacy, if you'll come forward. SUP SP 1912 True Hotel. Thank you for being here this evening, Ms. Harper.
Again, you do have before you True Hotel. This is SUP SP, do you need me to get sworn? Yep.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
I got so excited, I forgot to, I forgot to say a few things here, yeah. Let me see here, I guess I need to read this first on Mr. Baggett. Okay, we're going into what is called a quasi-judicial hearing, which means that it's more formal than other public hearings. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing, and so I'm gonna now inquire of the council whether any member has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or any ex parte communications, or any close familial business or other association relationships with an affected person, or a financial interest in the outcome. Counsel, you heard all of those? Is there anybody on council who needs to acknowledge any ex parte or other? Okay, hearing none? Okay. This is a fact-finding hearing, and appropriate sworn evidence must be presented as a basis for whatever decision the town council makes. Opinion testimony is not appropriate factual evidence unless the witness is a recognized expert on the subject. Therefore, opinion testimony concerning such things as impacts on land values, traffic safety, or noise levels should be avoided unless the witness is a recognized expert based on training and experience. You are permitted to ask questions, councilmembers, of other speakers concerning their factual testimony, and councilmembers are only allowed to receive factual information about the cases in this hearing, and are not allowed to discuss the cases outside of this hearing. So with that as a prefacing comments, if there's persons here who expect to testify in this particular hearing, now would be the time for you to come forward and to be sworn by our clerk.
I'm ready now.
Now, I think we've been properly opened the public hearing, and we will hear from Ms. Harper. Thank you very much.
We'll try this one again, right?
Thank you.
This is True Hotel, SUP SP 1912. The applicant in this case is Herring Sutton and Associates, LLC. The owner is Garner Ventures, LLC. The location is 545 US Highway 70 East, and the track size in this particular part is 4.17 acres, plus or minus. You will see both of these hearings that we'll have tonight do take place on what is currently the same parcel. Those will be subdivided, if these are approved, going forward, but we had to break them out and do the hearings separately because one is a special use permit, and one is a conditional use permit. So that's the reason for two separate reports and two separate presentations for you. Both of those were heard at the February 7th Planning Commission meeting as well, 17th actually. This is for a hotel. The footprint of this hotel is 12,175 square feet, and it's five stories tall. The zoning requires a 6,000-square-foot minimum lot size, and you see the setbacks there before you. There you see the site plan for the hotel, backing up to the railroad on one side. The dental office that we'll hear next is in front of that, and you see the future Joan Sausage right-of-way there. This is a rendering of what the hotel would look like. It would be constructed of three shades of gray brick and feature-colored accents that represent the True brand. There's no open space required, since this is a commercial development. There is 12% tree preservation requirements in this case. Commercial developments start at 10%, and there's a sliding scale that goes up to 12% depending on how much vegetation that you're saving. In this case, there isn't substantial vegetation to save, so they did have to go with the 12% number, which is the upper range of that. So they have 12.3% replacement vegetation. The perimeter buffers, half of a 15-foot perimeter buffer is provided adjacent to the neighboring storage facility, and a 15-foot perimeter buffer is located at the rear of the property abutting the railroad right-of-way. There's a 15-foot street buffer against both the southern and eastern drive aisles, with street trees provided every 40 feet on center along the southern and eastern drive aisles. Lighting for the site has been shown in conformance with the UDO, as well as staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminarily approved this site plan. Parking is based on the hotel motel use, which is one parking space for every room plus one for every two people on the maximum shift, which would be 125 spaces, and that is what has been proposed as well. The site that you see there, again, is on the back part of the 545 US 70 East. The site doesn't contain any FEMA-designated floodplain. The True Hotel is not located within the watershed protection area. The site is subject to storm water quality requirements for nitrogen, as well as quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. Storm water management for this site has been designed in conjunction with the US 70 dental office that we'll hear next. The development plan proposes a bio-retention area and a dry detention pond to provide treatment for nitrogen and meet all water quantity requirements for the sites. A nitrogen offset payment will also be required as part of this development. Connection to City of Raleigh Public Sewer and Water will occur through existing infrastructure that you see there. The site will share an existing drive off of US 70 directly across from Management Way. The planned Joan Sausage realignment anticipates the new road section running along the eastern property line of this site. Development has reserved 50 feet as future right-of-way for that realignment. The hotel site has approximately 20 linear feet of frontage along US 70, and there's an existing dedicated right-turn lane off of 70 onto that shared driveway that I spoke about earlier. Due to the short frontage, lack of adjacent infrastructure, and plans for the Joan Sausage realignment, the developer will pay a fee in lieu of construction of the required curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the frontage. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan calls for US 70 to be a six-lane divided section in this area. Therefore, with the payment in lieu of the addition of the lane of pavement, curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the frontage of the dental office as well, these plans may be considered consistent with the recommendations of the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the Parks and Rec, Open Space, and Greenways Master Plan revealed no plan recommendations in this project area. Therefore, this project as proposed may be considered consistent with that plan. And after sufficient review and plan revision, staff finds that this project, as now proposed, may be considered consistent with the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance, so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. Prior to final plat approval, payment of engineering inspection fees shall be paid to the town. Prior to issuance of a building permit, a minor subdivision plat shall be approved and recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. Prior to issuance of a building permit, payment of public utilities fees shall be paid to the City of Raleigh. Prior to issuance of a building permit, the nitrogen offset payment is required. Prior to certificate of occupancy, the storm water control measures, maintenance plan, and associated memorandum of agreement shall be approved and recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, payment for fee in lieu of curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the US 70 frontage shall be approved and accepted by the Town of Garner Engineering Department. And this seventh one is one that was not in your report, but we had talked about with the applicant after Planning Commission, but, so we felt we needed to add that in here as well. That a 50-foot permanent slope easement be required from the edge of Joan Sausage right-of-way line on the west, to the west, and a similar 25-foot easement will be requested from the dental office property, as we see next time. The Planning Commission did review this request at their February 17th meeting and unanimously voted and confirmed staff's findings in Section 5 that SUP SP 1912 True Hotel is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can. The engineer for the project, as well as the applicant, is here as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Harper, for that presentation. So I'll go to council. Anybody has a particular question? Let's see, I'll start with Mr. Singleton, and we'll move from there. Thank you.
Yes, sorry. The condition that was added regards to Joan Sausage realignment project, we of course talked about this last week at our work session. Do we believe that the 50-foot easement is adequate? And the reason I ask is, at the meeting last week, we were told that the way the alignment is currently looking, that property further east that Morrison Associates owns, there may be more right-of-way requirement on that property, but we don't know that yet. So I'm just wondering if we think the 50-foot is adequate? I don't know. That's why I'm asking. Secondly, where it comes out intersects with Highway 70? Do we know if that has been discussed? I'm assuming it has with not only the folks, the design firm working on this, but also with DOT where it intersects with 70, since that'll be a pretty big intersection.
Oh, gross, behind me, sorry.
To answer the first question, based on the information we have, we feel that the 50-foot slope easement would be enough. More than likely, there will be retaining walls that will have to be installed in southern, I guess the northern portion of the site when the future alignment comes over the railroad, but we feel that that's enough to accommodate it. I mean, at worst case, if there was more than that needed, it would require some compensation for the rest, but we believe it's enough. That's why we use the 50-foot. What was, can you repeat the second part of your question?
The intersection, the proposed, is there the conceptual design right now, the proposed intersection on Highway 70? I'm assuming that that's been run by DOT, and, because that's gonna be a pretty big intersection once it crosses over to the property south of that. Do we understand that DOT is okay where conceptually this intersection is?
I believe they've been involved in the discussions with where we're tying in, because they've also been reviewing, they're gonna be receiving the tech memo, so that they are aware of where the alignment ties into 70.
Okay, all right. I thank you, and thank you for adding the condition on there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. Mr. Matthews, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'll go to my right and start with Ms. Behringer.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Vance?
Not at this time.
Dallinger.
Do we have any estimate for the amount of tax revenue that would be generated by this property for the town, both in the form of sales, that type of revenue, activity tax, sales tax, and then also property tax? Do we estimate that at all?
We do not.
I think we should probably start doing that, as just to be able to project and measure different types of projects, particularly ones that are sort of generic with regards hotels. It's easy to model what those, that activity level would be, what the property value would be, what the revenue generated would be. I think that's very helpful, just as we go forward with more commercial development in the town. I know Mr. Singleton had brought this up. He had noticed a lot of EV chargers. That's not part of our UDO. Is that part of their plan at all to add EV chargers as part of this?
It is not designated on the site plan, so I do not believe so, no.
Another kind of generic question, how much is, or an estimate for that, the fee-in-lie amount?
We don't have that yet. They will have to provide that to the engineering department, and they'll check that against their current numbers that they have for the different things like asphalt and that kind of thing, and then they'll look at that.
Is it possible at all to, in the future, get a range for that type of? I'm just curious, because we have fee-in-lie of that for parks and things, and fee-in-lie sidewalks, and I'm just curious.
We can let their engineer, he's, when you're ready to talk to him, he is acknowledging that they've kind of run some numbers, but you will not.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that we would prefer that we get a definitive cost estimate. I'd be a little bit hesitant to put out a range without getting information from the applicant.
And we're gonna bring the applicant up next. So if, Mr. Dallinger, if you want to hold your question to that, okay. Anything else for Ms. Harper?
No. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Harper, okay. Who's next from the applicant? I think a couple of you were sworn.
I'm in the middle one.
Probably here, if you just announce your name and address, please.
I'm Richard Herring with Herring Sutton and Associates. We're the civil survey company assisting Mr. Sanders in both of the next ventures. We've worked with the town, don't have any real concerns about any of their, where we are at this time. Let me point out one thing that I believe addresses your question, Mr. Schimmel. If you'll notice on the site plan, that the hotel has moved completely as far to the left-hand side of the site as possible. Where you see stormwater device there is, if the projection is, the future right-of-way is to go over where we have the slope easement, you'll notice that we have nothing built in that except for a stormwater detention or bio-retention area. Probably the easiest thing on the entire site to alter and.
Alter and/or relocate.
When we started off, we thought that the answer was the road was going under the railroad, and now we understand it's going over. We were having to adapt in this direction, and we're having to adapt in this direction, still have to adapt. So that vacant area in there, I think, would be appealing, that there's no structure in that area. To your question, we have provided something from the contractor and also from our office of estimating that number in the area of $10,000. I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Dallinger? Okay, coming up the line there, Mr. Vance?
No, sir.
Mr. Matthews, excuse me.
So Forrest, where you gentlemen and ladies are at at this point, you're okay with where we're with the town and everything we've got at this point here, taking consideration that overpassed, we were quite unsure of at one time how that was gonna play out?
Well, and obviously, that means that we're not sure either, and that's why we slid over, not just the first 50 feet, but the additional area. And as I say, that seems to work. I mean, but until somebody draws a plan on what's going next to us, we don't really know.
Got it, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have just a curiosity question. As I travel, I occasionally see True Hotels out there. Haven't stayed in one yet. Are there any others here in the area, probably that I'm not aware of?
I think there's one in White, one in Raleigh area?
Airport.
At the airport, yeah, okay, I believe I have seen that one. That's the only other one in this area?
I think it's the new style, it's the newest Hilton style. It's under the flagship of Hilton, and it's one of their newer models.
Yes, yes, I've seen some out west in some areas. I've traveled out there, I think, but wasn't, yeah, so thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, we travel a lot, and we've stayed at a couple of them. I think one in Pigeon Forge, maybe, somewhere in Tennessee, and then another place. They're nice business hotels. They're real nice.
Okay, any other questions for this particular applicant? Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Are we hearing from anyone else, or is that it? Okay, council have questions for any other person? These are the persons we expected to testify, is that right?
I think only if you have questions.
Yeah, okay.
Other than that, I think we're.
All right. Are there other persons in the audience who came to speak to this issue this evening? Hearing and seeing none. I believe we're ready to close the public hearing, aren't we? So close the public hearing and ask the council, what is your pleasure on this permit request? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council accept the staff's statements regarding plan consistency in Section 7 of this report as our own, and find the applicant meets the 10-minute permit criteria in Section 3.14D, and therefore approve SUP SP 1912 True Hotel.
Okay, we have a proper motion and a second by Mr. Matthews, I believe, is that right? Okay, before we vote, any other questions, comments from council? Hearing none. Call for approval of the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? And I see and hear none, so the motion is properly carried. Thank you very much, and we need to handle this separately, don't we, Ms. Harper? Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
The dental office, yes, sir.
And I guess I need to, do I need to make the explanation again, or what I said before just applies? Okay.
Same public hearing.
Same, same. Are there any other witnesses for this particular public hearing? Okay, hearing none.
Can I ask for just one clarification, Mr. Mayor, before we go forward? Councilmember Vance said Section 7, but I think he actually meant Section 5, just for the record, so we'll have that. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much, okay. I'm going to open the public hearing, and call on Ms. Harper again for a presentation. Thank you.
This time, we're looking at the US-70 dental office. This would be CUP SP 1921. Again, same applicant, Herring, Sutton &amp; Associates, same owner, Garner Ventures. This site is approximately 1.56 acres. This would be a medical office, specifically dental, but it's under our medical office category, and it's about 63, 163 square feet. This is in a conditional use zone, a service business conditional use, C108. Again, minimum lot size here is 6,000 square feet, and you have the setbacks before you. You see the site plan there with the True Hotel in the back of this. 70 would be in front of this dental office, and you see the Joan Sausage lot and how the True Hotel lot comes up and has the little flag there, flagpole. This is a rendering of the building. The building will be constructed of brick and stucco per the requirements of the conditional use zoning district that it's in. This will be in shades of gray and white. There's no open space required because it is a commercial development. Again, same thing with the tree preservation. They are meeting the 12% with existing, I mean, with replacement tree coverage, excuse me, to about 12.7%. There is half of a 15-foot buffer provided adjacent to the neighboring AutoZone property. There's a seven-and-a-half-foot wide street buffer against US-70 per the requirements of the US-70 Highway 401 overlay district. And there's also 15-foot street buffers along the eastern and northern drive aisles. Street trees, again, are provided every 40 feet on average along the eastern and northern drive aisles. Lighting for the site has been shown in conformance with the UDO, as well as meeting staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminarily approved this site plan. Parking is based on the square footage for medical office, which is one space for every 200 square feet, so 32 spaces are required, with 59 being proposed. The site does not contain any FEMA-designated floodplain. The site is not located within the watershed protection area. The site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. Stormwater management for this site has been designed in conjunction with that for the True Hotel. The development plan proposes a bio-retention area and a dry detention pond to provide treatment for nitrogen and meet all water quantity requirements for the sites. A nitrogen offset payment will also be required as part of this development. Connection to the city of Raleigh public sewer and water system will occur through existing infrastructure. The site is located on the north side of US-70 between Joan Sausage and New Ran Road. The development will share an existing drive off of US-70 directly across from Management Way. Again, the planned Joan Sausage realignment project anticipates the new road section running along the eastern property line of this site, and the development has reserved 50 feet from the combined dental office True Hotel sites as future right-of-way. The dental office site has approximately 110 linear feet of frontage on US-70. There's an existing dedicated right turn lane off of 70 onto the shared drive. Again, due to the short frontage, lack of adjacent infrastructure, and plans for future realignment of Joan Sausage Road, the developer will pay a fee in lieu of construction of the required curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the frontage. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan calls for US-70 to be a six-lane divided section in this area. Therefore, with the payment in lieu of the addition of the lane of pavement, curb, gutter, and sidewalk, these plans may be considered consistent with the recommendations of the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan revealed no plan recommendations in this area. Therefore, this project, as proposed, may be considered consistent with that plan. After sufficient review and plan revision, staff does find that this project, as now proposed, may be considered consistent with the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance, so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. Prior to final plat approval, payment of engineering inspection fees shall be paid to the town. Prior to issuance of a building permit, a minor subdivision plat shall be approved and recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. Prior to issuance of a building permit, payment of public utilities fees shall be paid to the city of Raleigh. Prior to issuance of a building permit, a nitrogen offset payment is required. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the stormwater control measures, maintenance plan, and associated memorandum of agreement shall be approved and recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, payment for fee in lieu of curb, gutter, and sidewalk along US-70 shall be approved and accepted by the Town of Garner Engineering Department, and that a 25-foot permanent slope easement be required from the edge of Joan Sausage right-of-way line. And again, we ask for the similar 50-foot easement from the True Hotel property, given the anticipated alignment of Joan Sausage Road. The planning commission reviewed this request at the February 17th meeting. The planning commission confirmed staff's findings by a five-to-one vote in Section 5 that CUP SP 1921 US-70 dental office is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. And again, I'll answer what questions I can, and the engineer and developer are here.
Thank you. Start with Mr. Dellinger on my right down here. A few, Eddie.
Question for the developer, actually, so I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay.
No questions.
Hi, Ms. Harper. Okay, thank you very much. We will now hear from the applicant, perhaps. Yes, welcome back, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm Richard Herring, Herring, Sutton &amp; Associates, Adam Wilson, and working for the same development group. I will correct myself on the previous meeting about one thing. The quote, I mean, the estimate that I gave you was for the frontage, really, of this site, the total impact of frontage, not the little bit that relates to the hotel. Group, I'm thinking about that question.
Okay, thank you for that. You're clear?
Yep. Is this a one-story office building?
Yes, sir.
And your requirement is 32 parking spots, and you all are providing 59, is that correct?
That's correct.
Why was the decision made to not make it a two-story building if there's adequate parking?
The dental, this size of building, and this is a dental office that has numerous locations, a dental group that has numerous locations, is their desire to have a medical office strictly the full 6,000 on one floor.
It's built to suit.
Yeah, it's built to suit, that's a good way to put it. And I will indicate that we have, we are showing more parking than is being required by the city, as you will, as we all know this day and time. Dental offices rotate an awful lot of people through for cleaning, dental assistance, that type of stuff. This is the number that we initially were told that they desired that they could get them in.
Thank you.
Questions for this witness, Mr. Vance, Ms. Behringer, down the line?
And you're okay with adding the additional condition, the seventh condition about the right-of-way?
Yes, and right-of-way, as we all know, although we don't know what the plans are going to say when they're drawn, I think we all know that Joan Sausage will tie into 70, and it won't go up or down, so at least we'll be in the closest proximity.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Matthews, anything? Counsel, are you satisfied? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we hearing from anyone else, counsel? Okay. Is there anyone here who desires to speak to this issue, who for some reason doesn't favor this process, or you want to make general comments? Okay, seeing and hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing and call for a motion. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Don't be bashful.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council accept the staff's statements regarding plan consistency in Section 5 of this report as our own, and find the application meets the 10-permit criteria in Section 3.14.D., and therefore approve CUP SP 1921 US-70 Highway 70 Dental Office.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Behringer, seconded the motion. Any other comment, question? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Okay. I don't think we need to call the roll, there was a vote of four to one. Okay, yes. Mr. Dellinger, we'll need you to offer.
I need an official explanation for my no. I just understand now, having you having answered my question, it's sort of a bill to suit. But I wish that we would have developers that would try to make the best and highest use of the property. I understand that that can fit there, but it's a situation too where there's adequate parking to do something a little, again, all in favor of more commercial tax revenue for the town. Again, I understand it's billed to suit, but I just don't think it's in the highest and best use in public interest. That's my personal opinion.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger, okay. We have it properly recorded? Okay. So the motion passes on a vote of four to one. Okay. Anything else we need to do on that, Mr. Baggett?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you all for coming, and we're finished with those two items, I believe, and we'll move to the next item on our agenda. Mr. Chris Johnson? This will be an item under new and old business, and item number one has to do with the annual resurfacing contract. Mr. Johnson, thank you for being here.
Good evening, mayor and council. Here to talk to you tonight about the bid award for the annual resurfacing contract. Brief agenda for today. Go over a quick recap of the resurfacing budget and the funding mechanisms used, and then the, talk about the bid opening results. We'll talk about a change order to add mileage to this contract, and then kind of go over the final resurfacing list, the schedule, and final recommendations. So just a recap on the funding. As you know, there's two sources for this funding. One would be through annual pow bill funds, 610,000, and then also through motor vehicle fees of 730,000, for a total of 1.34 million. As you may know, we've currently been looking at doing, starting last year, looking at doing a mixture of resurfacing work as well as preservation work, which is more along the lines of, say, patching, micro-surfacing, crack sealing, slurry seal, stuff like that, which is managed by the Public Works Department and would go out later this year. But this year, we were planning to do 60% of our funding source towards the resurfacing, and then the 40% remainder, which gives our resurfacing budget for this year $804,000. So for the bid opening results, we had nine bids that were received on February 10th. The engineer's estimate for the initial work was 800, just over 824,000. The lowest bidder was Daniels Incorporated of Garner with an initial bid of 581,653. One thing we noticed, this in your backup, there was a one minor deviation that we had discussed with purchasing officer and the town attorney, just over one item in the contract that had been put in as a unit price of zero, but the extended item, they put it in as 11,500, which was for traffic control. It was a quantity of one, they just didn't put the unit cost in there. We felt that that needed to be adjusted in the final cost, because that was obviously the intent, but that would bring the total adjusted bid to 593,153, which is 28% below the engineer's estimate. There was no MWB participation on this project because Daniels Incorporated is planning to self-perform all the work in the contract, and they are not an NWE firm. So since we were able to, if you remember from last year, we got this contract out almost two months earlier than we did last year, and on top of that, there has been a, more of a shortage of NC DOT work, and that has led to some very competitive pricing and a lot of interest this year. We felt like with the, some of the streets we had in the initial contract, we weren't able to take those as far as we wanted to, because we were budgeting on what we thought was going to be the total contract amount. So we've gone, kind of bringing you a change order sort of at the beginning, which is a little abnormal, but we also want to make sure that when the contractor gets out there, we've already extended some of these streets that were in the contract. So we're looking at extending both Seastone and Competition, which are both in Eagle Ridge, because those are two very long streets within that subdivision. That'll allow us to finish out the majority of those streets to where the phase line's in today, where the bad asphalt turns to much better asphalt. And then we also wanted to add four more streets with Saddle Ridge Court, Liotta Drive, Roxanne Drive, and Top Leaf. Basically, we met with Daniels Incorporated, talked to them. There's only two items in the contract that are not unit price. They were lump sum, which was the mobilization and traffic control items. Basically, we made an, came to an agreement that extending the two streets in Eagle Ridge wouldn't require any additional mobilization or traffic control, because you're already there, but we went ahead and added and prorated up those two line items to account for four more streets. So basically, there was originally 13 streets in the contract. We took a prorated fraction of four thirteenths, added it to those line items, or multiplied by those line items to adjust them up. So that brings the revised bid opening, or I'm sorry, revised bid, including the change order number one, to just under the 804,000 that we had in our budget, which is 802,856. We also went ahead and also prorated a time extension into that change order. We also went ahead and also prorated a time extension into that change order to account for the additional time to do those extra four streets and extending the other two, and we did that by a prorata method as well. So this is the final resurfacing list. Basically, the initial 13 were what was in the original contract. Seastone and Competition near the top, number threes and fours, we extended those by several blocks each, and then the last four in green are the streets we've added to the contract. And this kind of just sort... I know it's a little difficult to see on the screen, but it kind of gives you an idea. The streets in red were in the initial contract. The streets in blue were added on. So we've got a very good spread of our resurfacing dollars around the town. So the schedule, following tonight's authorization to award, we would move towards execution of the contracts, have those executed by the end of March, look to issue a notice to proceed in early April, and with the new construction timeline, would be finishing up around mid-September. So the recommendation is to award the 2020 resurfacing contract to Daniels Incorporated of Garner, also approve change order number one, and then to authorize the town manager to execute both the bid award and the change order with Daniels of Garner in amount to not to exceed 802,856. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay, any questions for our engineer? Like we're getting even better bang for our bucks on this one. Be able to resurface more streets, that's great.
Yes. I think for comparison, last year, I think we had 1.6 miles. It's a little bit smaller budget than was this year, but this year, we're going to have over three miles.
Question.
Go ahead, Ms. Behringer.
Mr. Johnson, the... I know 40% of the budget goes to the pavement preservation contract. Would we be getting a recommendation from the consultant on that or with your department in Public Works, or how will that proceed?
The consultant that did the pavement analysis has already provided the reports to us, so Public Works will be looking at that, going out, I guess, field verifying all of that information, and looking to put together that contract in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Johnson?
Mr. I do, Mr. Mayor. Have we contracted with Daniels Inc. of Garner previously?
We have not in the town of Garner, but we did reach out. We've got a lot of long list of references. They're pre-qualified with NC DOT. They've worked in several counties throughout the state, and they've also done a lot of local work in Garner for private development. We've got very good references all around.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. If there's nothing else, I think, counsel, you see the recommendation before you. Is there a motion?
We authorize the town manager to execute the contract with Daniels Incorporated not to exceed $802,856,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Is there any further discussion or question? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and it is so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. The next item of business, we will hear from our finance director, Mr. David Beck, regarding the appointment of a deputy finance officer. Thank you for being here, Mr. Beck.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening. Coming tonight to seek your authorization to appoint a deputy finance officer within the finance department, we have a position which is second-in-command in the office, which is the accounting services manager position. But state statute allows the governing body to duly appoint a deputy finance officer to carry out all those required duties of the finance officer in their absence. And so to maintain continuity of services and for internal controls within the office, we would like to have that person formally appointed to that deputy finance officer position. We have an individual in that position, in the accounting services manager position, Ms. Jenny Shaker, who is more than qualified to perform those duties as a deputy finance officer. So this would give her the authorization to sign any of the documents that I have to sign as the finance officer, such as the pre-audit certification that are on all of our expenditures and anything else that may come before her or before me requiring the signature of the finance officer. So we have a resolution that would appoint that position, the accounting services manager position, as the deputy finance officer for the town.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counsel, the information he shared probably cleared everybody. Anybody have a question, comment? Okay, hearing none. I entertain a motion to approve this recommendation, or actually to approve the ordinance, isn't it?
Resolution. Mr. Mayor, move that we adopt Resolution 2020-2409, authorizing a deputy finance officer for the town of Garner.
Second. Okay, question is made and properly seconded. Any question? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Beck. Next item of business is... See, I'm about to get ahead of myself. We're hearing now from the Human Resources Committee, and you should have at your desk, I believe, a sheet that has the appointments on there, but let me hear from Mr. Vance, I believe.
Yes, Ms. Mayor. Mr. Diliger and I consist of the Human Resource Committee. We conducted several interview sessions on February 20th and February 24th of the applicants who applied for the existing vacancies within Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources, and also the Senior Advisory Board. And after going through a detailed discussion and lengthy review of the applicants and interviews as well, the one position that was vacant was filled by Ms. Maung Ping Ye. She will be in a position that was vacant by an individual and will be there until June, the latter part of June. And then for the senior center, we have to be filled by Ms. Sharon Vertey and Ms. Ann Morgan. They also will be serving out terms that were left vacant by individuals who vacated those positions.
Okay. Other council members have a question for the HR committee, in particular the chairman and/or Mr. Behringer, who make up the committee? Okay. Hearing none, do I hear a motion that we approve these appointees or nominees?
No.
Is there a second?
Baggett.
Okay. Any further discussion, question? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the work of the HR committee and these nominees, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. So it is so ordered. Thank you. I want to thank these two gentlemen for their service. Some of you other council members may have served on the committees I have, and it can be a rather... In my process, particularly if you have lots of applicants in, so it does take a while. So thank you very much for your good work.
You're welcome.
Okay, item four on our agenda, we will hear from Mr. Treisinger regarding appointments for UDO rewrite Steering Committee. Thank you, Mr. Treisinger.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In addition to the report that was in your packet, I did distribute a final kind of roster to you at your chairs. Following the presentation at the work session last week, I was able to reach back out to the folks from the development community and general citizenry. I did have one person that did ask to take their name away. So as I had explained, we ideally had five positions available. Originally had six people who had expressed interest. We did have one person recuse themselves or back out due to other time commitments. So we do have five folks left who have still been expressing their interest. Three of them I know live locally here in Garner, so three out of those five. So I think, you know, they do kind of fit the bill of being both professionals working in the community as well as local folks. The other two, Mr. Yocley and Mr. McKenzie, while they do not live in Garner, they have both have worked for companies or continue to work for companies that have done a lot of work in Garner and in the larger Triangle area, and I think can bring a good perspective on what's working in other communities and what their experience has been here in Garner. So Mr. Yocley used to work for McAdams. He is now with D.R. Horton, who is doing a lot of construction here in Garner. He is also a former planner for the town of Wake Forest, so I think he would be a good, knowledgeable person to have. Mr. McKenzie is with Withers and Ravenel. His most recent experience has been with the Amazon Project. So again, he's worked with quite a bit of the various ordinance requirements that we do have. So if you're comfortable with that, we are certainly comfortable. If we should find out that anybody still, after some further thought, is not available to make the time commitment, then we can certainly reach out and find... See if we can find some other folks to step in. But at this time, I fully expect that those five are willing to commit to the process. So unless you have any other questions for me, I would just ask that you consider making the appointments from the council, the planning commission, and the public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Treisinger.
I do have a question.
Question here.
I think you should have at least one, if not two, just average citizens. They're not in the development community. We've got five developers on here, and we have some planning commission, people who have engineering backgrounds. And I know that's important because the Unified Development Ordinance is not a comprehensive plan, but I still think you should have at least a citizen who may want to serve on this that has got to realize it can be confusing, complicated, and time-consuming, but I just think you should have an everyday citizen on a committee like this. Gray's opinion. Y'all may think I'm crazy, but...
No, and I would not disagree. We were hoping that there might be somebody that would come to the table, and if you all know of somebody, we'd certainly be welcome to. And again, we're not opposed to having 11 people on the committee either, so...
You said that they're going to meet, Mr. Treisinger, once a month on a Thursday? Is that correct?
Yes.
Is it what Thursday of the month? Are you looking at...
We don't know yet. Yeah, well...
A Thursday once a month.
May make a request, since I'm going to be on this committee, that it be either the third or fourth Thursday, because I already have meetings on the first and second Thursday.
And so that'll be one of the first items of discussion at our kickoff meeting on the fifth this Thursday. But yeah.
I commend you for the numbers you're going to be on there. As we all know, or you and I both know, the larger the committee, sometimes the more difficulty in finding a meeting time that everybody can attend.
Right, right. But again, we had kind of identified 10 to 12, so that's a good number. So if we can find, you know, one or even two people, still, that would be just fine to go ahead and add them, and we can come back and appoint them at a subsequent meeting.
That's going to be my point. I was kind of echoing what Gray was saying. I think we need probably a few more perspectives. Average citizen, maybe some other folks have worked specifically in more urban, mixed-use type of development actively on the committee, and if they're residents, that's even better. But as long as everyone's open to adding members as they come available and have interest in time, I'm good.
Absolutely.
You'd suggest this will probably take 12 to 15 months at least?
Yep. And so it may not be every month. We will have a standing time, but I envision that there may be a few months where we don't meet just because of the need for a little extra time to accomplish something between those meetings. But it could be every month, but ideally, I think there'll be a few months that'll get skipped. Yep.
So if I'm hearing correctly, the challenge will be for perhaps you or your department, but also for members of this council, if you know of persons that you believe would effectively serve on a committee like this, and to bring those persons to Mr. Treisinger's attention. We need to do that as quickly as possible so we don't delay the beginning work of this committee, right?
Yeah, I mean, the first few months will be focused more on getting the rather more mundane chapters addressed as far as the general administration kind of things. When we get into the nuts and bolts of things, it'll be a little later on, so... But yeah, the earlier the better.
All right. I believe it's appropriated at this point for us to vote on the recommendation of the names and persons on the UDO Steering Committee, and if we choose to add some, we can vote on those at a later date. So, counsel, I'd love to hear a motion on these names that have been presented here anyway.
So moved?
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, other than finding other citizens to serve? Thank you, Mr. Treisinger. All in favor of appointing these members to the Steering Committee, please say aye. Any opposed? And there is none? Okay, thank you very much. All right, I believe we are now down to item J, is that right? Committee reports, and we've already heard from the HR committee, and we've heard from this committee. Are there any other committee reports? Anybody? Yeah, we do. Yeah, yeah. Cover that in a minute. All right, so now we are going to move to item K, which is manager reports, and I recognize our town manager.
Yes, mayor, town council, you have Garner info in your packet, a list of items there, so if you have any questions, let us know. Skip over number two for now. You have census update under item three, that actually, we're going to do a more comprehensive report on that at a later meeting, probably next meeting, but just to let you know, we are involved with the Complete Count initiative through Wake County, and we're also going to be putting together a video that we're going to put out on our social media and our other outlets to encourage our citizens to complete the information, because it is important and makes a difference in some revenue sharing and revenue distribution. So it's very important that we have our numbers be accurate. Item number four, that's the rescheduling of the Bus Rapid Transit Open House Meeting, public meeting, that's going to be tomorrow from 4:00 to 7:00 at the senior center. And the other thing I wanted to inform you of, on Main Street, you know, we had talked about the railroad installing fencing on one side of Main Street at the railroad, and in order to do that, they're requiring us to put bumpers at the parking spaces on Main Street, and we do have a price for that. We'll bring that back as well as a budget amendment. Did you have a number, John?
The low bid, the prices that Public Works received was $6,870, and that includes all of the parking stops, as well as restriping the lines between the parking spaces. And this is all the parking spaces that are along the railroad side of the corridor from approximately Purvis Street down to where the parking ends, down towards past Griffin Street. And so we would, if council's agreeable for us to do this work, we'll go ahead and let Public Works work on all the contracting and put a budget amendment on the next meeting. But if you're comfortable, we'll go ahead and get the work initiated.
Okay, thank you, counsel. What say you? Sounds like a reasonable request to me.
Please, let's do it. We've waited a long time. Yes, into place.
Census to move with that, and you'll come back with final figures. Okay? Okay.
Starting to get a lot of questions about the coronavirus, so we just want to let you know that the lead agency for that in our area would be the Wake County Public Health. There's already been some announcements put out and distributed about, you know, precautions to take and those type of things, so we will, you know, take our direction from there. Also, the PIOs in the area, including, you know, Wake County, some of the towns, even I think Durham and some other counties are kind of teaming together so they can get one joint message out and make sure it's all consistent. But basically, you know, we're going to follow Wake County Public Health until maybe the state steps in or the CDC on any precautions that need to be taken here locally. And so you'll... You know, I've sent that information to town staff a few days ago, just to kind of let them know what our course of action is as far as the information... Well, actually, I just shared the information that I got from Wake County Public Health. So, but it just has some precautions, you know, wash your hands, you know, don't touch this or that. So some of those type of precautions, you're going to continue to see. So any questions about that?
I will just comment, you may have covered it, but I know we received communications from Mr. Rick Mercer, Communications Manager, and I was pleased to see that not only, obviously in Wake County, but there is a regional communications planning that relates to this virus. Communication staff in Wake County jurisdiction and Durham are organizing a joint information system, or JIS, that will enable us to share all pertinent information and be consistent, accurate in our messaging. So not only just in Wake County, but certainly on a regional basis, which I think is a great idea. So thank you, sir. Anybody have questions for the town manager on this issue? Okay.
All right, last thing I'm going to cover before I turn it over to Mr. Roy Lance, is the city of Raleigh sent out a notice, and I think they sent it out to all of the, everyone on their water system, that they're going to be using a chlorine-only disinfection system for now, until April 7th. They used to use ammonia and chlorine combination, but until April 7th, they're going to go to just chlorine only, and they said the residents might notice it in the smell or whatever of water, but it's perfectly safe and within limitations and standards, so...
We have. We have noticed it.
Yeah, so, anyway, just let you know that it's, it's still safe to drink. It just might smell or taste a little different. And so with that, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Roy Lance, and he's going to give you an update on the fire memorandum of understanding committee.
Roy Lance.
Good evening. Thank you. All right, we want to take a few minutes just to give you all, for some of you all an update, and for others of you all, we'll back up and start at the, at the beginning, just to bring everybody up to speed with what we've been working on. This is a group that we've informally called the MOU Committee, or Memorandum of Understanding, and that has to do with the idea of potential fire merger that we've been talking about for some time. Well, actually, probably for a very long time, but most recently, in its iteration, this started at a joint Town Council and Garner Fire Rescue Board meeting on September 26, 2017. So to give you a sense for, for how long we've been working on this issue, it started then, and at that meeting, we spent some time as a group, both parties, both organizations, talking about sort of getting a fuller understanding of Garner Fire Rescue and the work that they do, and also talking about the accreditation process that they are in the middle of and working successfully towards, and how that might have some impact on the merger, and then, or at least the idea of a merger, and then talked about, you know, timeframe and process, and, you know, how all these things might work. And the conclusion of that meeting was that we needed to set up, you know, some smaller subgroups to keep, keep talking and see if, you know, what sort of potential there might be, and continue the discussions. And so the town appointed two members, two, at that time, two council members, Buck Kennedy and Ken Marshburn, and then on the fire side of the equation, there were three board members appointed, Nancy Anderson, Kenny Walker, and Carl Williams. So that group, along with staff from both, both sides, started meeting to try to figure out what made the most sense. And the first meeting was on January 4th of 2018, so about, almost two years, a little more than two years ago, in fact. And since that time, we've met 12 times and talked about a whole host of topics, from, you know, the purpose and, you know, the purpose of the committee, and sort of making sure that there was some agreement on what the, the scope of the committee's work is, and, you know, what might some, some sort of document look like that we might work towards eventually. And then we started talking about the, in more detail, about the accreditation process and how that works and the timing. And we spent some time talking about the history and traditions that, that motivate and drive the work that Garner Fire Rescue does, in addition to the obvious, you know, fire, firefighting and fire prevention and that sort of thing. We also spent some time talking about Fuquay Varina, because that's a department that 10, 15 years ago went through a merger, so that, you know, they're a neighboring jurisdiction, roughly similar size. We felt like that was a, a good comparison to talk about. We, we talked about if, if we were to merge, what would the role of the fire board be? What might that look like? We also did a tour of the newly renovated fire admin space at 914 Seventh Avenue. We spent some time talking about a benchmarking study that Harrisburg, North Carolina, which is just outside of Charlotte, they, they commissioned a report from a consultant to do some benchmarking of their department, and multiple departments across the state participated, including Garner. And so all the participating departments got a chance to see the results, and so we, we took a look at that report and got some really interesting data about how our, our department here in Garner, how that stacks up on many, many measures against other towns across the state. We spent numerous meetings talking about pay and benefits and how they, how they compare, getting some, some preliminary information. And keep in mind, all of this is just, you know, we're sort of gathering some preliminary information, having some discussion, so I don't, I don't mean to suggest that we've, you know, we've nailed all this stuff, but these are the things that we have started talking about. So, you know, pay and benefit practices, how, how the IT functions are different in the two different organizations, finance and budgeting, facility maintenance, vehicle maintenance, all those sort of operational things. Took a tour of all four fire stations, and we talked with Wake County Fire Services about how a merger might work from their perspective, you know, because they are, you know, the town and Garner Fire and Wake County are all parties to this arrangement that we have to provide fire service. And we also talked a little bit about Wake Forest, because they're in the middle of going through a merger now, so, you know, we can learn something from the process that they're going through as well. So anyway, that's, that was about 12 meetings worth, and lots and lots of discussion and conversation and questions, and that's, that's what we've done so far. And at, at this point, we, you know, some of the things we've been talking about, or will be talking about in the, in the near future, are, you know, would it be helpful to hire a consultant to help us navigate this? Because this is, it's complicated, and it's not something that either organization does on a super regular basis, and so there might be some benefit to getting somebody that could help us navigate that process and, and think through how it might work and what benefits there might be, and answer some questions that we have not been able to, to get a firm answer to yet. And then, of course, we're, you know, we're just going to continue meeting, generally monthly, but, you know, it doesn't always work out to be exactly monthly, but just to continue meeting and talking. And as has been the case all along, Garner Fire and Rescue is going through their accreditation process, and it was, it's been very important from the beginning that that, that process needed to be able to play out, and that it's, it's difficult to do, it's difficult to take on several big projects at one time. And so we could do some work on the merger concept that would help us get further along, as long as it was not getting in the way of the heavy work that had to go along with accreditation. And so that process is continuing, and that, that process will probably continue for another 12 to 18 months. I think August of 21 is the current schedule for when they would sit for accreditation or would hear the results of the accreditation. And then, you know, we want to make sure that we're reporting back to you all periodically about the work that we're, that we're doing, and that's one of the reasons that we're here tonight. So Chief Poole and Nancy Anderson are here in the audience, and if you have any, any questions, be happy to answer them, but mostly just wanted to give you an update on the work that we've been doing and continue to do.
Okay. Get to you just a minute, Phil. I wanted to thank Matt for his leadership, chairing these committees and keeping notes and trying to keep us on track. I think he's done a good job with that. And after I hear from others, I have a couple of observations to make, but Phil, I recognize you. Do you have questions for me?
On the accreditation process, Chief Poole, is, is that a semi annual? I'm trying to remember how often you have to do that, because I know it's a very entailing thing to do.
Let me, let me, let me ask Matt to come forward if we want to ask him questions, I think, to get this...
Come right to the hot seat here.
Here. Phil, hold your position over there.
The initial accreditation process takes approximately five years to go through. Once you're accredited, every five years, you go through a reaccreditation cycle, similar to police department. So hopefully, we sit for our first ever accreditation process in August of next year, and then we would go for reaccreditation five years later. So you have to do what, annual compliance reports along the way and continue to hit benchmarks, but it's typically a five-year cycle.
My other question was, I know where we're, what we're trying to attempt to do with this merger here, and being one of the new guys on the board, and I know we've talked about this off and on, with your meetings and what have you, what are the, some of the key things that you're running into that you're, the bumps in the road that you're really having to focus and deal with, that y'all can discuss at this point or share with us, just some, not a whole lot of detail, but what are some of the key, hot items that you're having to deal with here that's slowing the process down maybe?
I mean, I'm not sure that I would say that there are things that are slowing the process down, but we've, I, I think one of the things that will be the most complicated are the, the pay and benefits, just because...
Pay and benefits?
Yeah, that's, that's naturally going to be a, a high priority for, you know, if you think of a, you know, a firefighter transitioning from one organization to another, you know, if that's the direction that we end up going, that's, that's naturally going to be a big concern, and there's a lot of, a lot of details to be worked out there. So I, I don't, I mean, I wouldn't characterize it as slowing the process down, but if I had to pick, you know, one area that was probably going to be the, one of the more complicated and delicate things to figure out, and even frankly, just to, you know, calculate the cost of, and there's just a lot of different individual situations, and it's just a lot that, a lot that goes on there. What else would you say?
No, and I, I think Mr. Roy Lance did a great job of summarizing where the main committee has talked. One thing I will say is we've had, for every committee meeting, we've had subcommittee meetings where I've met with the leadership team with the town and typically, typically another department head to talk about merger issues such as public works. So who's going to maintain our facilities once we merge, where sometimes we outsource that to other places. Vehicle maintenance, so we've met with the IT director to talk about transition. So virtually every facet of some of the operation changes, we've been working on while the MOU Committee has had these conversations, trying to, to determine what those bumps in the roads are. And so I think we've been fairly proactive in, in meeting with these other departments to try to make sure they understand when a merger takes place, what is required from us, you know, to continue to do our job.
And I guess you brought, you brought a good point there, Chief, with the vehicle maintenance once, and if this, when this takes place, that, I know we're looking at our Public Works over there and the shops and the maintenance, and how the growth is going to be there, because if this factors into it, that most certainly could change the game plan and what they're looking at doing over there. And I guess I'm thinking a little bit outside the box, but with the growth we're experiencing and, and in a positive way, feel like this is going to come to pass whenever it does, but what do we need to be planning ahead on? So if we're going to expand our Public Works, do we need to factor this in that scenario? This potentially could come here. Will all maintenance be performed at each individual station, so...
Well, I, I, I would agree with you that that is one of the, one of the issues that our Public Works staff is really interested in, talking to the consultant when we do the space needs study, is our, our fleet shop in general is, is an area of focus for them, but especially if you were to think of, you know, the ability to work on larger pieces of equipment like fire apparatus and that kind of thing, which may or may not happen. There's a lot of different ways that we could do that, but that's for sure going to be part of the conversation that we have about our facility needs at Public Works in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments before I jump in at this point?
Quick question. What would be the change in the proportion of the town's financial obligation to the fire department relative to the amount of money it currently gets from Wake County, for example?
It shouldn't change significantly. I mean, for the most part, you know, the cost of providing fire service in the entire fire district, which expands beyond the town limits, is, you know, is a fixed amount that's shared, you know, in the town limits, is paid for by the town, and in the unincorporated areas, paid for by the county, and that split would basically be the same. I mean, it, it, there are minute changes each year at, well, minute, I mean, there are small changes each year as, you know, the town annexes and grows, and that changes the calculation a little bit, but the principle of how it's split would be the same regardless.
Mr. Vance? Questions? Mr. Barringer? Mr. Singleton? Okay. Let me, let me mention, as council probably notes, when this committee was first put together, the council that was then in office appointed, or approved, myself and Mr. Buck Kennedy as the two members, and I think I can say we've served faithfully, as certainly Mr. Kennedy had. So obviously, Mr. Kennedy is no longer on the council, but at least preliminarily, we asked him if he would continue serving on this committee, given the fact that he's been on it from the outset and has all the history and the information about it, and he graciously consented to continue serving, and I think he would continue doing that. But I felt the need to bring this back to council, since the initial structure was two members from the council. So I'd like to have, in essence, your comments and/or approval that we continue with, along with Mr. Kennedy, with the two members, or if you have any concerns about that, now would be a good time to express those.
Mayor, you and I have discussed this before, and I had no trouble with that, with you and Mr. Kennedy both serving, because Ms. Barringer is also liaison, so she hears some of this also, so it's not like the board's not informed, so, with members. So with, with yourself and Ms. Barringer, you have two sitting council members. So, Mr. Kennedy...
Okay. Appreciate those comments. Anybody else?
I would agree.
Also, was mentioned here, we've reached a part of the process where we've had some interaction with a consultant that worked with the town of Wake Forest. Am I saying that right, consultant? So we believe that that would be advantageous for us to consider bringing in a consultant. That's going to cost us some money, and, but it would be a town expense, so probably this committee soon will bring back a recommendation that we engage the services of a consultant to help us with some of the, I shouldn't say the wrap-up, we're not quite there yet, but I think help us to work through some of the issues relating to pay and those matters related to that. So just wanted to let you know that we'll be coming back. I don't think we're ready to make a recommendation right now, but we will be pretty soon, I believe. Would you both agree with that? Maybe?
I mean, I, I think, I think that's something that we are going to discuss at our next meeting, is what, whatever, what the desires of the group are.
Okay, so I don't want to jump ahead, but I wanted to alert this council on the fact that that possibly will occur. So, okay. Any other comment, question, concern? Okay. Recognize Ms. Anderson out there, who is on the committee. Let's see, any other committee members here? Don't believe I see any. Okay, she served faithfully as well. Okay, if there are other questions, thank you, Matt, and Matt, for, for your input here this evening. We'll continue to, to work this process through and be bringing back a recommendation, I'm sure. Okay, Mr. Manager, did that conclude your information?
Manager reports.
Okay. I'm down to attorney reports.
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Counsel reports. I'll start just sort of in the middle with Mr. Vance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just only have one thing, and I've already discussed it with the town manager, and that's the appearance of dumping and trash appearing throughout the, the ride aways in, in Garner. And we've already discussed one area of significance, and that's all I have for the night.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. I'll come this way. Ms. Barringer.
Okay. Yes, sir, I have a few things. I was privileged to hear the, to see the Garner's Got Talent performance this Saturday, and I will say, it's been a long time since I've heard someone sing the Alve Maria, but it was absolutely beautiful. I really appreciate the talent that we saw that day. Wish I had the energy that those children had with the gymnastics performances. Not that I would try it, I just want the energy. So that was, was good. And Mr. Johnson, I'm going to be a broken record again. There are more lights out at South Station now. Many of the poles have four lights on, but only one working, and some have none working. And the parking lot has gotten, it's in very bad shape, a lot of pop-outs, a lot of broken pavement. If you would authorize me to go and aggravate the own, the property manager, I'll do that for you, but it's, it's a growing problem. It's not getting better, so thanks for your help. And the fencing on the railroad, I, I'm just excited to hear that, that we're getting that done. It's been needed a long time. Other municipalities have had it. It's a safety issue, and my, one of my very close friends lost a brother who decided that he could walk on the railroad track because there were no barriers, and when the train came along and blew the whistle, he tripped on a cross tie. So it's, it's more real when you know somebody that's happened to, and you don't want it to happen to anyone else. So thank you, whoever has worked on that with the railroad, to get that done. And then a question for Mr. Roy Lance, I didn't ask him earlier. Now that I've, I have communicated clearly about what it is that I want removed from that piece of property that DOTM's on 70 and, and... from that piece of property that DOTM's on 70 and, and Timber Drive, do we have a timeframe for when that can be cut down?
No, but I'd be glad to talk to our public works staff and get that done as soon as we can.
Well, if they need chocolate chip cookies, I'll take them. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna...
Yes. It's, the brush is gone?
No, no, the metal.
Oh, the metal's gone now. But I, I want the bushes down too. Not the trees, just the bushes. The dead bushes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna go back and catch Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah, I'm talking to Steve Jeff, but I have a question about the Minglewood property. I drove by there the other day and thought that I'd seen that there were more trees cut down than had initially been cut down. And then I talked to some other people and they're like, yeah, they've cut down more of those trees. I'd like to know, and I don't know who to ask, I'd like to know, are they still meeting their requirement or plan to meet their requirement? Are they going to replace them? Or was that a part of an original preservation area and they changed their plans? Did they tell us they were changing the plans? Did we authorize them to change the plans? Did they change their site plan to replace the loss? Or was it a surplus from the beginning? And I just don't know that. So I'd like somebody to look into that and find out. It was on, I think, the, most of the trees that I'd noticed, the ones were on the north side of the property, on the Lowe Shopping Center side. The other issue, at the next council meeting, if we get an update on the traffic calming, I've noticed strips out in my own neighborhood, and I think somebody else mentioned them out there again. But if we could get an update on progress on traffic calming and what measurements are being taken or what kind of things are being done in that regard. I know Mr. Singleton had mentioned that and everyone else sort of had talked about it as well. So for the next meeting, if we could get an update on the status of, of that activity. And that is all I have.
Okay. I'll go to Mr. Singleton.
Can you touch on those, Mr. Dellinger? Again, if you want to see some good ones in Raleigh, go on Glasscock Street between Raleigh Boulevard and Old Wake Forest Road. There are numerous ways there that Raleigh has put in to slow down the traffic. Also, there's one added in Wilson and College Drive, right across, or involved in Barton College, where they just put a raised sidewalk right in the road, which you can do. You know, Todd couldn't do that years ago. They seem to do it just fine out of town. So anyway, Ms. Beringer, does the South Station, you're talking about the North South Station Shopping Center, correct?
Correct.
Well, let me ask you a question. I know this was approved many years ago, but if they had a conditional use permit or SUP or whatever it was back then, I'm assuming there was some type of lighting plan. If they're supposed to have a lighting plan, then a lighting plan ought to be enforced. I don't know.
I would agree.
Again, that's something many years ago. But if they're supposed to have lights working, then they're supposed to have lights working if it was approved in the plan by the then Board of Alton and the staff. So I don't know.
The one thing we do know is they are in the progress of converting their lights to LED. And I know they're running into some roadblocks and some issues, but...
Planning is followed on that as, as enforcement, as well as asking what Mr. Johnson's been doing. But planning is also communicating with them on the lighting requirements.
That's good. I'll mention something Mr. Johnson has been helping with along with Mr. Hodges for several months. I'd asked because of some issues with stormwater in Greenbrier about the stormwater pond behind Lowe's Home improvement. And Mr. Johnson followed up with another email today, which I appreciate an update, because they couldn't get the certified letters at the proper owner. But anyway, that's all been taken care of. Now they're working with them. He told me to make sure that the pond, they're going to do some work there, will be functioning, functioning properly, because it apparently was not functioning properly, which may have created some, may, may have made some stormwater issues in Greenbrier worse because the stormwater runs from there. So I appreciate him working on that. It's been a slow process, because the, the email I sent was in June. And we got to this far, but at least we're making progress. I appreciate his help with that. And I appreciate also help. I sent an email to staff yesterday, I believe, about some of our restrooms, which were not open, and particularly at South Garner, because you got athletic activities taking place. It was explained that the family restroom was open, but the signage didn't say that. It just said the restrooms are closed. So got that, I hope clarified in the email. They will open up all the restrooms this week. But when you got kids playing soccer, softball, baseball out there, lots of parents there, the restrooms need to be up and running. So I appreciate Mr. Forrest names responded back to my email, and I appreciate that. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Everybody's probably aware of this, but I was talking to some of the committee people today with the Vietnam Veterans Wall at Hills that's coming in April. And this thing is just, it's going to be very big. It's going to really make us stand out, stand out even more in just the procedure which they're bringing it in. And we'll find out about, I think, the 82nd Airborne Coral Group's going to be performing and on a Thursday. And on Saturday, the Marine Corps Band is going to be, and they got, so this is going to be quite a big event. And so there'll be more things forthcoming. But I know we had it back a few years ago, but I think this one's going to be even bigger and better. So on behalf of all the veterans, and it happened to be one, it means a whole lot to see they're not being forgotten. We've got a memorial and having a wall right behind it there is going to make it even, even stronger. It's going to be a great message to all of our veterans out there. And appreciate the town working with that committee on that. I know we've got some involvement with it. I'm not sure what all the details are. But anything we can do to make it successful, it's going to be an outstanding thing. And the other, it's, it's a minute little detail on, but you know, when we go to these meetings and what have you, and everybody says, who are you? Who are you? And I made mention to our clerk this evening. I said, do we still, can we still get a, a name tag of some sort so we can go to these functions and meetings that people know where we are from, rather than having to write a hello, my name is Mayor Marshburn? Or if that could be done, would the board be open to that? We could let our, our wonderful clerk over here bring us something back to look at, magnetic preferably.
So did you write down a new name tag that's your mayor Marshall?
Uh, it did. It worked pretty good, too.
They said there's a closure.
I got extra servings.
I think way back when, we did have those. I'm not sure I kept up with mine very well. But it's a little magnetic thing you stick in your pocket.
All of them be looking the same. So if it's good as a group or we're representing the town, you know, let's, let's do it right. And if the board's okay with that, let her...
I still have mine.
Okay, Ms. Beringer still has hers. Everybody would like to have one of those, I guess. They're not very expensive, I don't think. Hopefully not.
All, all of them look, all of them look the same, so.
Okay, yep. All right.
Is that what you needed, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. I would second Ms. Beringer's observations. I had a chance to attend the talent show. They had two versions of those. And I attended the evening session. And yeah, some nice talents over there. So in future years, if you have a chance to go, or if you want to sign up for a talent, you know, they'll probably let you do that. You might have to audition, though, I think. I'm not sure. But anyway, you know, there's been some discussion around town recently about the litter problem that seems to be never abating. But any rate, do we ever cooperate? I, I got this mailer from NCDOT, spring litter sweep from April 11 to 25. That's what, two weeks? So if something like that would help us in promotion to join with them and/or, I know, engage our town in some way. I know we've had...
We do that on an annual basis, right around that same time. We have a townwide litter sweep. And that is coordinated by Jaclyn Standard in our engineering department. And at the same time, we also do some big sweep initiatives that help with the stream cleaning also, lakes and streams, waterways. But we participate and get, sometimes we get supplies from DOT to assist with that.
And maybe we can discuss this as a work session. I mean, I, I share the concern of many that, you know, a town looks pretty messy and trashy when there's a lot of trash and litter out there. Of course, I have, as probably the rest of the council, I have participated in these things. And I was amazed, you go out and clean up a segment of, of road, say a half mile, and it's all nice and clean. And you go back in about two days and you already see other stuff thrown out there. It's a little dismaying to see that. But at any rate, anything we can do to, to make public pronouncements, or I don't know, maybe we need some enforcement. I'm open to suggestions and ideas. But it is, it is unsightly. And I guess you could say it's unhealthy in some of the things that I've heard that you find out there sometimes, from animals and so forth.
Yeah. And if I might just add to that, along the railroad right of way on Jones Sausage Road, as you leave or go circle around behind East Garner Middle School and over to White, there are rotten railroad ties in bits and pieces laying all along the right of way, as well as trash. It seems to me, I understand that the trash happens and that you have to keep on that all the time. But those rotten railroad, the ties have been replaced and the, and the old ones have just been left there and they're rotting and they look awful. So if we could get DOTA or the rail division or whoever is supposed to do it to come in and pick up the mess they left.
Thank you, Ms. Beringer. I think that's part of the challenge sometimes, is getting those who are responsible to take care of it if it's not the town. And the town can't do everybody's pick up. And I know you agree with that, but it's a problem. So council...
And it's not just in Garner, and it's not just in Wake County.
Well, I agree.
It's why he drives all over us.
Yep.
That's true. But you want to be careful and not get comfortable with that and say there's nothing we can do about it. It is everywhere and we need to address it all the time.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have one more thing.
Go right ahead.
I just want to remind everyone that we have an early voting site in Garner. And tomorrow is election day, 6:30 to 7:30. Get out and vote. A turnout helps make sure we have another early voting site in the fall, hopefully.
The early voting is done.
I mean, sorry, not early voting. Early voting is over. It is election day, primary day tomorrow. I'm still in early voting mode. 6:30 to 7:30 over at Avery Street. Or no, at your polling place. See, I'm still in.
Here you go.
Go to your polling place. Shows you how much I've been doing early voting.
Don't, don't go to the early voting.
Do not go to the early voting site. Go to your polling place on election day tomorrow.
That's right. Thanks, sir.
I get rid of all that.
Okay. Ms. Clerk, we call on everybody else. Do you have anything to report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Hearing none other, anybody in the audience, any final observations? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
At 8:45. Is there approval to that? I'll say aye. Any opposition, no?
Aye.
Thank you all for being here.